To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of a perfect friendship among the united cultures.
I'll turn the time over to Commissioner Beer for clarification.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this new year, we ask for your guidance and blessing as this commission works through your task. And we ask for your guidance, given my travel citizens will ask that you bless our families and our communities. And we ask you to help the struggling small businesses try to survive the mandates, especially those that live on. Great that you would restore a nation to the Christian roots that once enjoyed as a nation, just in the name of our business, Lord Jesus Christ.
Morning Commissioners. It's a pretty solemn rebellion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Aloha.
Aloha.
Well, welcome to twenty twenty-two, January third, here we go, January fourth. Um, I didn't receive any written public comments. Are there any public comments from the audience here this morning? Yes, sir. Stick to your name and...
Thank you very much. My name is Johnny Chandler. I'm the new owner of KCCC, KCCC nine thirty AM. I purchased that in June, uh, put it back on the air, it was on silent. I wanted to introduce myself to y'all and everybody else in this room as well. Um, I'm a small startup radio station now, looking, want to get involved in the community, support the community, and also have the community support me as well. There's a lot of tax meetings this morning, I'll be at every meeting from now on, probably going to know me very well. So I want to give everyone a view of card, let you know that I put it back on the air in June, and as a result, I had an SEC licensing renewal that happens once every seven years. That happened last year in twenty twenty-one. So we're playing classic country music, uh, that was paying homage to the original music that was played on the station that started in the late sixties. We'll bring back community forum, let's straight even, and get very local in the community, so I just wanted to introduce myself to y'all, make sure you have the contact information. So anything you can do to help me, I very much appreciate it. You're very new to the community, you're new from Albuquerque in mid-September. And if there's anything I can do, please let me know, because that's what, that's what we're trying to do as well. That's it. I just wanted to introduce myself, because I'm available. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Welcome to the community. We appreciate you. All right. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll, uh, move to item number two is IFB, RFP bid awards for IFB twenty-one dash seventeen. Fire hydrant testing.
Mr. Chairman, the leader. We solicited IFB twenty-one seventeen, and we can be doing some three bids from Waterway, Princeville, Puprow, and Pure Technology. Um, the lowest overall responsibility was received from Waterway, was that being said after we were given all the patents, uh, this patent is already, would that be a good thing? Uh, I think it was something to go on the way of the medicine.
Any questions or comments?
We are kind of, and then you are open for testing, actually, they're testing hydrants and flooding, right?
So, so I, I, I do have one question with this. Is this part of the fire monitor, uh, interview that we have now with you guys, because hydrants with the county really doesn't have any, it water infrastructure?
No, but as part of ISO, a huge portion of our points are hydrants. So the co-ops own them, the co-ops will maintain some everything, but to test the flow, our departments normally handle that, so that...
Okay, and that falls on them.
And so, um, after they're done, you'll see that we painted different colors based on the flow of the hydrant and everything, so that we can just look at a hydrant and know where to go.
Okay.
It's all throughout the state with our departments handling it.
Do you, any, any required repairs, have you done five co-ops themselves? Okay, good deal. Yeah, just a little verification, we'll get the questions on that, so. You're good with this? All right, good deal. You're good with this too? Entertaining motion that we approve, um, IFB twenty-one seventeen fire hydrant testing. Second. Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, discussion and direction on ordinance, uh, draft ordinance O twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Um, Eddie County letter bumping ordinance.
Question, can we, are we not going to approve the minutes? You skipped two.
I'll let you.
Treasurers report.
I want it.
One and two.
Oh, yeah. I suppose, uh, am I got to add a thing?
Yes.
Yeah, you know.
One and two.
All right. Scratch that. My apologies. Yes, Commissioner, we are going to approve this.
I was just wondering.
So item one is, uh, commission meeting minutes from December twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, any comments, questions, discussion? Entertaining motion, we approve commission meeting minutes for December twenty twenty-one, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
They'll move.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Epstein.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right. And my treasurer's report was in the agenda packet for your, um, review for information. All right, item number three, discussion and direction on ordinance O twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Now. I don't know if you, I, I hope you've had a chance to look at the information there. And the ordinance is similar in many ways to ordinances that have been passed in other counties in the state of New Mexico. So there's a fair bit of definition in there and a fair bit of, um, description about where and how it applies. Um, and it incorporates, um, citing violations and the steps involved in that process. Um, but we wanted to be sure that it followed the intentions and purposes that the commission had asked the community services group to follow. Um, it's not as simple as, we want something says we're going to be able to cite and find, right? So you have to have some definitions, some descriptions, stuff in there. Um, the... I think it's important that we have a public hearing on it because of, um, the descriptions and how and where it apply. So we just want to make sure that the community services group had your input and insight as to, yeah, this is, this is the right direction, this is the, this is the tack we want to, to take. We'll have the public hearing, then we'll bring it back, um, to the commission for approval, uh, consideration for approval as an ordinance.
And when would that be?
We'd have to publish for, what, fourteen days? Um, so the next...
That's, that's if you, if you propose this specific ordinance, then we would set it, it's got to be set fourteen day, we gotta have fourteen days notice. Are we talking about having P and D look at it first and just going forward from there? If you're going to use this, we do need to change that couple of the definitions, like private premises. I mean, but it, it act, it, it seems to define it as if it's a residence or a house. But vacant land is just, so it is also private premises, so you can't, that's where a lot of this is going to go out there and just dump it on private land and just throw it out. And so we may need to adjust that definition. And, you know, if you're gonna, i- if the commission with that cha, we, we have to make that change, for sure. Then we would propose, you're gonna vote on that, propose it, we wouldn't have the public hearing, and we've got to have fourteen days between when it's proposed and the notice and the hearing. So it'd have to be in February that we do it.
Because the next commission meeting would be fourteen days.
Right, you've got to get it into the first meeting in February.
It would be the first meeting in February, I, I just ask, yeah.
We're not having a meeting here then, aren't we, in the NMC?
We are going to have the meeting on the eighteenth, it won't be, we'll be, the, NMC starts...
The nineteenth.
No, it starts, well, the afternoon starts at one o'clock.
Okay.
Tuesday afternoon, so we'll keep our morning meeting, it won't be that long.
Can I ask one question? Public place, we've got state BLM lands covered under, under the term grounds in there, because this is grounds and buildings, but... Any, all streets, alleys, public ways, public parks, spaces, grounds and buildings, is that, is that, is that clear for public land?
In the past, what code enforcement has done is if it is on state BLM land, we also, we also...
You could, you could also include the term public lands in there, public land.
We have to do that, you got to put the lands in there too.
Because Avalon is BLM years ago, I mean, Avalon's not planning a lot of airspace or anything like that.
But in, in that instance, because of... So it's still within the county, and it would be illegal dumping within the county, and you would still want to follow through, but you involve the appropriate agency in that process. If the ordinance is approved.
We have jurisdiction to impose fines, it was on BLM state.
We take the position that we do have that authority.
I, I mean...
That, that would be up to the judge, right?
Right, okay. That would not be absolutely necessary, I mean, really.
That's where a lot of it goes on.
Yeah.
Let's be honest about it, I mean, they're getting BLM lands out here, that, that's where they're throwing this stuff, just like anywhere else.
Yeah, six, yeah. Every so...
I, I, I just, uh, in looking at this and, and reading it, I just, um, uh, on, uh, six point six, it talks about including dirt. I mean, there'll be a lot of places that'll have some dirt stacked up that, I mean, I just don't see.
It just says we need to remove it, if they're going to pile up a bunch of dirt, rock, et cetera, you're not going to leave it stacked out there. You know, we can take that out if you want.
I, I, I just think that there's be some people that's going to have dirt for different reasons, like farmers and ranchers and that kind of stuff, that I don't want to get caught up in this.
So there, there's, if they put it there, fair enough, if they didn't put it there and don't want it there, they...
And if it, if it's illegal dumped there, if, if somebody drives up and drops...
Five yards of dirt?
Well, concrete and stuff, that's what I'm thinking, you know?
That's illegal dumping.
That's illegal dumping. If, if they stack it up themselves, if they stack it up themselves, then that's for future use, and I don't want to see them get caught up in it.
So you, my opinion is you could leave the language in there, and if the landowner says, no, that's, I placed that there.
He can put anything he wants.
No harm, no foul.
Okay, yeah, this is not the trash ordinance that, that was tried to pass five years ago or whatever. We're, we're not getting into that, I mean, the purpose for this is for, is to give the landowner a tool in his box to say, hey, this guy dumped a bunch of, this, this guy dumped, load of concrete out here. Go find him or...
Be careful, because the definitions and terms in there could apply to property that has junk and trash and stuff on it that, um, is a nuisance, is an eyesore, is whatever. And the landowner may not choose to do anything about it, and...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you get caught up in a deal where, uh, like that one building was dumped out there and a big fence put around it, and it's still laying there.
And, and to Al's point, I think, and it was actually in your district, one of the problems we've had is some dude opened his back door and was just pulling his trash bag out the back.
Yes.
And then, then it ends up in the farmer's ditch, and that's what was ending up in the field, so I can see how, I don't want to go to the junkyard ordinance that we had, but, but I think controlling that, just toss your trash out the, and we've got the same problem right now, I think, I don't know if I've called you or not, but dirt ladies just throwing her stuff out the back door, and everything else is, is pretty disgusting. So, so I do get that, that, that there is going to be this...
Through the balance.
uneasy balance of trash bags, I get it.
Yeah.
But I think we've got to be careful of, of that line and make sure we're not.
Do you want the language that's in seven, seven point two? Fred's out there hesitant, you know, been cleaning out his barn and, and stuff laying out there, and it gets up in the sixty mile an hour wind blows all over creation. That's one of the things that's prohibited here. Says you can't have, says litter on private premises is subject to movement by the elements, will be secured by the owner or the tenant before it is allowed to be removed by the elements to private premises or public places. So you can't leave trash laying out there, it's going to get caught up in the wind and blown all over creation.
Which goes to John's point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, are we gonna? That's in here.
I had one call from a lady in, in my district that the guy brought one of those, uh, they had a pickup sitting out there, and he was just taking his trash bag and going in the back of the pickup. And sometimes he hit the pickup, and sometimes he didn't, and it's laying all over the ground and stuff, and I don't want that.
In his yard?
It, it's in the back of his yard, but it's right next to her fence.
I mean, it would be on an individual basis, right? I mean, if...
There's got to be some discretion here.
Yeah.
There's got to be some discretion.
Leave that in, it won't be... I mean, if I'm one of those guys, that, that's not going to happen to me, because I know...
You're going to burn it, you're going to take it to the right place.
Just pile it up there and don't care if it blows all over the country, we need a tool.
Okay, so, so we just wanted to point out those nuances and make sure that that was aligned with your expectations.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll set a public hearing, uh, as soon as possible.
Like these little modifications in the language, you understand the penalty is going to be zero dollars to a thousand bucks. That's for illegal dumping litter.
Unless it's got hazards placing in this...
And then a five, and that's right out of statute that allows the counties to do that, and counties consent those.
And the judge has that discretion.
At least it's...
Those penalties. We'll make the citation, and I don't know about recommendation or anybody, citation will be issued. Uh, the ordinance would authorize county code enforcement to be one of the enfor, uh, enforcement personnel, um, to, to do that, which is consistent with what goes on in our counties.
Yeah. Well, that's what we want. Yeah, so that we have some authority at our code enforcement to help out, uh, our law enforcement.
Right.
See, to your point on the, the public place, on six one one, it says litter on any public place, though, private premises? I don't see a definition for private premises, is that what...
That's, that's five point one, point ten is a private premises, that's where that's defined. And we're going to fix that definition to include vacant lands, and I just have it where it's a dwelling house, et cetera, et cetera, it's going to...
That'll, okay.
Yes.
As from that...
I have one question, what if this happens repeatedly? What if we have somebody that, you know...
Well, I think the judge will take that into consideration and probably put him in jail if that happens.
Well, you know what it says, every day a new violation.
That's right.
That was my question.
So, I mean, that could now, uh...
So it'll, it'll, it will present some challenges, um, with, where we know of individuals within the county who have raised concerns, and then this ordinance will then, um, set some of those things in motion to be addressed in a, um, we'll set some expectations for some folks and we'll really...
I really like our, our, about the promethia evidence.
The notice is going to be on our code enforcement, these things are going to be hard to prove, don't kid yourself. We're not going to throw that stuff out there. In lots of instances, if somebody sees it...
Do you read the promethia evidence?
Well, I'm saying that's somebody's names in a trash bag or whatever. I can't, as people, but people still, they take trash out of their dumpster, they put them in the back of their truck to take it out somewhere, they go through it, see what's in it, throw the rest out. My name's law will be on there eight or nine times. And I say, well, the promethia, I threw it out. And there, there's going to be some defense attorneys that will be able to, because we have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt that that was them that did it. So my kid was driving my truck, I don't know, you know, I've lo, they always say, I load my vehicle. Pretty long to bike somebody, you know, that's how it ends up.
That's going to put a hardship on somebody that's actually doing that, they might be able to weasel out of it, but they're still going to think...
They'll make twice before they do it again.
That's right.
That's true. And that's what you want, you want...
They're still going to hire an attorney.
That's right.
And you got a lot to...
Some of them are hard.
We just get tires tagged down, we'd be in good shape.
Right.
Tag the owner's tires.
So, so the...
It's a good start. It i- it is, and it, it maybe it'll put a stop to some of these.
And the goal of this ordinance is not for overreaching of a control of private property.
No, right.
But the goal of the ordinance is to put a mechanism out there for the county to be able to stop illegal dumping and make Eddie County a more beautiful place, like that, that's it. I mean, that, that, that's where we're at.
We want to protect the rights of them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, but, you know, their rights extend to, about having illegal dumping on their property too.
The only purpose of government is to protect one citizen against another citizen, not protecting them against themselves. But if your trash is going on your neighbors', then that's not right, that's not right for your neighbor. And if you're throwing tires out in the bar ditch on the road, that's not right either, so...
Or dumping an old car in the bar ditch.
Yeah, yeah, mattress cap.
There's been one right across the state line going to El Paso for the last three months, been sitting there, and it just keep getting, I don't know, they, they got a camera, camera to it every once in a while or one, but it's getting pretty beat up.
It's just...
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the ordinance with some adjustments in definitions and descriptions is aligned with the intent from the commission, so, uh, Mr. Hooper, if you would set a public hearing for the adjusted ordinance as soon as practical and publish the notice, we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll bring back, um, any feedback and recommendations for the ordinance to the commission, most likely in the first meeting in February.
Okay.
Just keep, we will probably go ahead and do a motion to authorize the publication of the notice with this, this ordinance with those minor modifications, and set the public hearing for the second meeting in February.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Just before we vote, clarification, you said second meeting in February.
Was it, are we just doing one in February?
No.
Well, I guess we can do it the first, we can do it the first meeting in February, sure we can.
Right.
Because it's just a fourteen days, and we can get this out, right?
If we get it published this week, that would give us the time, we would make the next commission meeting on the eighteenth, but we would certainly make the commission...
That's right.
First week of February.
That's, okay.
That sounds good, I'm in my motion.
And Fred, you're in your second.
Yes, I think I've...
All right, all right, we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, we appreciate your discussion and input on that. Um, the next item is the resolution and agreement consent agenda. Um, I would like to pull item A, R twenty-two dash O six. Uh, there's an oversight in there that I need to correct, and then I'll bring it back to you next meeting.
Okay, entertaining motion that we approve resolution and agreement consent agenda pulling, um, item R twenty-two O six, um, to be returned at the next meeting, amended.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the next item is the elected official and department updates.
All right, here we go.
Counselors is...
Win and all.
Everybody in session, I'm sorry.
Doing Roman.
So just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, uh, last month, loving day, but I'm not the fire code, so I have an exact same fire code as... Um, we're currently having the high temperature tests and inspections, uh, in loving, because they're I S O's. And I also want to let y'all know that last month, in their consulting paper of the purchase of the rescue plumber, it was seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, purchased out of two hundred and five hundred four, so that we have our station now, with that, also. They bought it pretty good, we are running our end of the year numbers to see response wise and trend wise, and all that, and stuff, so some type of portion of it, we're bringing it to the listeners. Any other questions?
We, and we have our EMT guy.
Is our E, uh, we have been in place since November nineteenth, so he does a case inspection, third string team test, and it's, and it's been a full search, but we had a bunch of them down there. Actually, he stays, but not last week, sorry, last week, he's all, he's all spaced.
Okay, and, and he will be having trauma training also in the future, that's, that's an important thing.
He's actually getting lined up, but he was a fancy team, so I think that's, that's a step we all, we're...
Okay, can, can, in the future, you think there's ever a chance that we could get him to that level of paramedic?
Uh, for sure.
And that's what we're going to work for?
Yeah.
So that we have that type of person in the loving area? So that we have that type of person in the loving area?
Well, I think that we saw, I think we've seen, we did have a story in the rest all over the day. Um, having one guy that gets a single. Striker, which is pushing all that stuff so that we can see the best. And also the options to absolutely be. Thus, trying to get our, our.
Brilliant.
And we're working Charles back, we did a lot of backfilling Charles back. Also doing a lot of backfilling from T-shirt. Overall, we're trying to ensure that we have a response there.
I appreciate the work you're doing.
I think the progress and the steps taken in the planet is. Chief Mack has initiated is, we're definitely heading the direction we wanna go. And the dividends are manifesting themselves across the county. So, all right, thank you for your support.
We'll have to fire down this, this one. Hospital, we're trying to. Hopefully that'll get a follow. Appreciate y'all.
All right, thanks, Josh. Other updates from the departments? They all seem okay, satisfied. So legislative updates, um. Session starts eighteenth noon. Um, I'm working on some provisions that will help us as a county. Stay tuned in to the legislative session bills and what, uh, I noticed this morning, there are three or four prefiled bills. Um, so those are, the doors are open for those pre filings to occur before the, before the session. Um, tentatively, I'm working on a schedule where the commission could go. The third week of January, the second week of the session and setting up some meetings to meet with some legislators. Share messages about the county and the diversity and the opportunities here in the county with some legislators. So, um, we'll get that finalized. I'll keep you posted and we can make travel arrangements as needed. So. I think everyone else is aware of the, the outcome from the special session in December and what the governor signed. We are working on outreach for, um, legislative public and government affairs representation. So as I get that solidified, I'll keep you posted. So. Any questions? Okay, um, we have no, uh, travel requests, uh, so no action on item seven. We don't have any emergency business. Um, our legislators are getting ready to head back to Santa Fe here. So, um, we did have a meeting two weeks ago, last week. Time flies when you're having fun, but we, we had a chance to visit with our, um, most of our legislators. And Wes and I are working on connecting with a couple of others, um, before the session. So we'll continue to share and they're very aware of county interests, county needs, county desires. So we keep them posted in that regard.
And we're making sure that we have plenty of copies of our head study for them to pass out to other legislators at the session.
We can, we can make sure they have ample copies, yes sir. So, uh, uh, there's a, uh, some good information in the MOCA the last week of January. And they, they reiterated in their first letter of the, of the new year. About the five point three billion dollars generated for the state through loan gas in twenty twenty-one. So there's a fair bit of visibility there to share. The overhead study reinforces the mechanics of how those monies get to the schools. And how broadly that's applied across every county, every school district. So, but we'll continue to, uh, continue to work on that. Any other comments or updates, legislators, elected officials? County manager comments, um. Prior to the start of our meeting, there was some discussion about, um, the Omicron variant or COVID in general across the county. Um, I will say that through Ms. Jennifer and partnership with the city and others. That kind of continues to sponsor, um, week, weekly vaccinations, uh, out at the Walter General Center. Um, and MBOH has agreed that we'll continue those every Monday. Um, so far, we, we're one of the few counties that, that provide that opportunity for citizens in the county. And we've surprisingly, um, through the end of December, we, we probably averaged close to three hundred each day. Um, this past Monday was one eighty-five, but it was kind of the new year. So, but still, in the last, in the last month, probably given over a thousand vaccinations at that one clinic. Um, we keep posted, you know, where you can be tested, where vaccinations are available for the citizens. We, we get a fair amount of questions about that. And as was discussed, um, there's still a lot of sick people. Right? Um, hospitals are still, um, lots of folks there in the hospitals. They're doing, they're doing their best to stay on top of that. So, um. The, uh. Last year, um, the Biden administration. Through an executive order said, if you're gonna do mandatory testing or mandatory vaccinations, um, towards the end of the year. That executive order was tested in the courts. Uh, one court stated, um, I understand, just before Christmas. So, I think it was the fifth district put a stay on it, then the sixth judicial district came in and said, no. So it's still. I guess it's still in, in motion. Um, as a county, we would qualify under the more than a hundred employees, um, for some of those requirements. We have not initiated anything at this point because of the uncertainty of what the courts are gonna do or not gonna do. Um, but at some point, we may be forced into putting a program in place. I, I really believe that the things, the actions that the county has taken. Um, and, you know, kudos to Mr. Charlie Powell, who's kind of been the administrator of keeping track of what's going on with the county employees. Tested, vaccinated, out sick, all those kinds of things. It's just been a huge task. She's done a great job. But all of the programs and practices that have been implemented, whether it's, you know, detention facility, in our county facilities. And with our county employees, I think we've been doing a pretty good job. Um, I'm concerned about mandating this or that, whatever it turns out to be. Because, um, that, that's not been consistent with feedback from the commission. Um, so we're kind of, see how that plays out, but I may have to come back and say that for these reasons. We need to do one, two, three. So, um, I'm gonna come on that. I know Roxanne stays on top of it. We get feedback from NMC. Um, but it's still, there's still a lot of question about what's expected and what's required and what's legal. So, um, absent that, more on the, the good news side. Mid, midway through our fiscal year, we'll get some updates from Ms. Reberga, um, probably the next meeting. Um, but financially, the county's in a good position. Our revenues are above our projections. Our expenses today are just below expectations. Um, our county projects continue to move forward, um, as supported and directed by the, the commission. I think a lot of positive things about Eddie County and we're working on sharing that message more broadly. Um, so that others outside of Eddie County and outside of Southeast New Mexico. Recognize opportunity and potential within and across the county for good jobs, um, good opportunities. Diversity of industry and things like that. So, appreciate your guidance and supporting in all that we do there. Um, any questions for me? County Commissioner Pamela Sten.
Well, I hope everybody had a, a nice holiday. Um, I look forward to the year. I'm very grateful for the work that the county does, um, in many different ways. But I did have the opportunity to go to the civic center, the Walter General Center last week. Um, and to Alice's point, coordinating all of that, you know, testing, uh, positivity, um, quarantining. It is just a ton of work, you know, for people to do. Um, I'm so proud to be a part of the county in the fact that we have distributed and the city and the department helped thousands of vaccines. Those are lives saved and you should be very proud and, and know that this is very purposeful work that's being done. Um, and, you know, to that point, it is not too late, it is not too late to receive your vaccine. We had a conversation this morning. Uh, I'm sure you all know people that are sick. I'm sure that many of you have been sick. Um, again, I will always kind of resort to, I would much rather have a person be sick for a few days, you know, with flu-like symptoms. You know, from a vaccine than, um, deal with the reality of COVID. It's, um, it's just, it can be so devastating and it can linger on. And, um, I don't know when the end will be. There will never be an end to COVID. It will be endemic. It will be here forever. But what we can do is we can suppress it enough to where we're not seeing so many individuals sick at one time. Um, our hospital in Crosby and Artesia are at max. We've got patients holding in the ER that have had heart attacks for days. Um, unable to transfer, unable to get a room on med surge. So they're making non-COVID wings in the emergency room. They're short staffed because nurses are sick and doctors are sick. Um, it's just a very difficult time for the healthcare system right now. So please keep them in your prayers. Please pray for our first responders. I got to talk to a lot of firemen, um, that were helping with the vaccine effort on Monday. And I'm just very grateful, you know, that we're involved in this and it's a unique program. Other counties are not doing something like this. So that's why I say we should feel proud of the work that we're doing. So, um, just know that you have my support, know that people that are working this are in my prayers. And, um, we just hope for a better year in that respect. So stay safe, take your vitamins, you know, go see your doctor. Um, and, um, if I can answer any questions or if you need any help, I'm happy to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah, Happy New Year. I'll keep mine really short. We've got lots to say, but I've learned a quick sentence. Stay safe, that's a good question.
Uh, just wanna wish everybody a happy new year. I'm the prosper here going forward. Uh, I think we've done great things in prior year at the county and I think we're gonna keep doing those things. Uh, I think we improved the infrastructure over the last few years and, uh, I think we're working in the right direction. Let's just keep doing it.
Yes, wish everybody a happy new year. I agree with you. Infrastructure's a big deal. Uh, I would like to add one comment to the ordinance. Uh, I would like to see a plan being formed for the first six months that we actually made a concerted effort. Seems to be the receiving judge. As the word gets around, that is part of. Jeff, I think.
Um, I, I just got a couple of things. I know we pulled that, uh, the one holiday schedule item off. I did have a lot of few complaints for the assessor not being able to close. A lot of transactions towards the end of the year is a pretty big, pretty big deal out there. We shut down Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, I mean. So it's pretty, pretty tough. A lot to see if we can change that. And that pretty holiday season, we get coming here, um, you know, to go where people kind of jump in and do their, do their business. A lot of people for tax purposes, obviously push things off too. We were hindrance to give some things. Another thing, but, but, uh. The governor's typically not real popular up here right now, but I, I, I refuse to, I refuse to not acknowledge good things that happen. And so I know that she has been making some efforts in, um, you know, giving some of this. The big package Biden's doing, what is, what do you call it? Not stadium, it's an infrastructure, the infrastructure bill, thank you. So I know that Mexico's gonna get a pretty large part of that. And I know that the governor and Secretary Sandoval have been making a lot of efforts to try to clean up. The efforts done by contractors, I'm familiar with some of those, uh, commission across it as well. You know, it's pretty tough to work for the DOT. As a matter of fact, it's almost impossible. You almost have to have a team of attorneys and you just try to fight through them. And she's been making a lot of efforts to streamline that. Secretary Sandoval's been doing a lot of good. They've been, they've been reaching out. We really appreciate that. We appreciate them trying to take care of, of, of the dollars that we are getting from the infrastructure bill and to, and to correctly allocate. Correctly allocate that money. So, um, you know, it. Agree with her on something and I will, oh, if, if, if she does something good, I will, I will certainly commend her actions and if she does something. Commend, is that the right word?
Yes.
Yeah, commend or condemn them, I guess. So, but, but either one, if she's gonna do something good, I'm not gonna be one of those naysayers and say she's not doing anything good. Because I appreciate what she's doing there. I appreciate Secretary Sandoval and, uh, and, and the efforts they're making to spend the infrastructure money correctly. Allocate it correctly through the state and cut some of the red tape for the contractors to save, save the, uh, save the taxpayers. Get better bank deposits. So with that.
I would say though, we would like to have, uh, Secretary Sandoval, who's been a real friend of Eddie County. Man, definitely.
He's been, he's just been absolutely wonderful. We had lunch with him a couple of years ago up there and he was, and he's done a lot of things for us. I know that Wes, you've kind of got a direct line to him. So, he's been.
Very good. No, he's, and he continues to be, right? I mean, he's, uh, continued work with secretary and his department and staff and.
I guarantee you, uh, having been in the construction industry and past president of associated contractors. He is such a veteran secretary than the previous secretary. For the construction.
We need to be good to do business with some work. We appreciate the governor and Secretary Sandoval. Making the county a better place to be. We're making, you know, Mexico a better state to do business in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your comments and insights. And we have no executive session today, and so that leaves item number twelve adjourned.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Crossed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.